...change. You've got to get three holes.
Can you please silence your cellphone?
All right. It's very hot in the woods.
Okay, Colleen.
Please silence your cellphone. The meeting tonight is for conduct of town business by the town board. The public is invited to participate at the items marked on the agenda, public comment. During that segment of the meeting, if you have a question or comment for the supervisor, please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. Please state your full name and limit your remarks to three minutes. Thank you for your anticipated cooperation.
Thank you, Colleen. I'd like to start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for all our brave men and women fighting all over the world for democracy and freedom. And we pray and we thank the armed forces. And we also thank the, our men and women protecting our laws. Thank you. I was stumbling there just in no...
As long as you don't fall. All right. Uh-huh. We know.
Okay. So we have a public hearing, a town board, Town of Marlborough, 21 Milton Turnpike, draft generic EIS and draft local waterfront revitalization program and draft comprehensive plan. And John Behan, our planner, is here to present that. John, it's all yours.
Wait a minute. That's not on the agenda. Don't we have to amend the agenda to put in the presentations?
It's a public hearing.
Oh. How'd you confuse them?
I was confused. He's trying to make me...
If this works.
Probably.
Should turn a little light. You can turn the lights.
Can you see that okay?
Yeah, we'll see.
All right.
Everybody can see that?
Yeah.
No, I think everyone's good, right?
It's fine.
Anybody got a problem seeing that? Here we go.
Okay.
Okay.
Moving on.
Is it on, John?
All right. It's on. Okay.
Jake, get right out.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you. So as part of the public hearing, I put together a brief presentation for the public and the board. The board's seen all of this, but kind of changed it up a little bit to make it a little more kind of focused this time. And so this is for the comprehensive plan, the local waterfront revitalization program, and a draft generic environmental impact statement. That's how these two kind of documents are being reviewed. And this was funded by a grant from the state of New York and is also town funds. So first of all, thanks to the folks that worked with us, the advisory committee members, the town board in particular, who've been all very supportive. It's much appreciated. And the names up there of the advisory committee members, we met for over a year on this project. We started, I think our first meeting was last June with the committee. And it was a great group to meet with. We met down at Milton's train station for the most part, and we had some meetings at the elementary school over in Marlborough. And other folks participating, I want to thank, though a lot of people came to the meetings and workshops. And also, some folks were there, almost like committee members, James Garfalo, Matt Kirstedt and Daniel Pinovea, also were 100 percent participants at our meetings. I want to acknowledge their contributions. And we had a lot of public meetings. We had plenty of opportunity. We had plenty of opportunity for folks to, you know, learn about the project. We had additional committee meetings. We had three public meetings. We had four committee forums, an economic development meeting with Kevin Dworka. We met with high school students. And we also, the town website has been actively, you know, posting all the materials, the presentations, et cetera. So real quick, you know, this work of the plan and the local waterfront program, there's a lot of work in the documents that we call an inventory analysis, which... That was weird. There it is. Okay. That kind of covers a range of, you know, kind of the state of the town, if you would, in terms of land use, economics, demographics, et cetera. It's all documented. We've given detailed presentations on this. And then part of the plan is coming up, part of what we did is coming up with a vision statement, you know, which is kind of a big picture look for the future of the town, which is, as you, as everyone here knows, is a unique, unique place. And that vicious statement that the committee came up with reads like this, "Marlborough is a unique riverfront town that offers a diverse range of business opportunities, cultural attractions, and housing options set in a beautiful Hudson Valley landscape where agriculture and history are highly valued elements of our community and our small-town quality life is the centerpiece of multi-generational living and civic endeavors." So that guides kind of the big picture of the plan and also some of the goals and objectives from the plan. And we used the town's older comprehensive plan as a foundation, and we moved it forward to try to get it to focus on opportunities for the town today. And I'll go over some of these quickly. One of them is hamlet revitalization and 9W corridor improvements. And the town has been working on these and, you know, putting some sidewalks in and some other things with the state. And there's another ongoing effort now that's kind of parallel to this, a 9W corridor study. And hopefully that'll come up with some priority improvements. The state would help lead with the town's guidance, and the town's active in that. So for the hamlet areas, though, looking for lighting, landscaping, and continued commercial revitalization, there are a lot of positive trends right now in the hamlets, and capturing those is important. There's also pedestrian bicycle and safety improvements. Now, those are going to continue to be important, you know, for the town. And also, looking at some development opportunities in the hamlets, we don't, we don't see like major, big projects, but we see a lot of opportunities for smaller type of revitalization, what, you know, folks call infill development projects. That's an aerial view from Meet Me in Marlborough and this courtesy of them. It's kind of cool that's Marlborough Hamlet, looking toward the river. The sun is setting, I think, so it's kind of nice light. So looking for infill development, you know, kind of smaller scale opportunities to continue to bring people into town, both residential and commercial. And so part of that, one of the recommendations in the plan is to, for the town to develop some guide, design guidelines for this type of development, okay? And, you know, to consider the historical context of the town. It's a pretty tight environment, so you want to be able to accommodate growth, looking at the setbacks. I think some of the zoning needs to be looked at in terms of lot sizes and setbacks so the folks can build without getting variances. I think many of the developments are lots in there. You couldn't rebuild today without a variance. And also, looking out, the other area is along the enterprise area, along Route 9W, the commercial part of town, somewhere, set of recommendations. A little bit different out there, but looking for access management, you know, that's looking at ways to kind of continue to control how folks get on and off 9W, shared parking or interconnected parking lots, and then some of the aesthetic improvements, screening, berms, shrubbery, and as well as pedestrian access. And this will be a long-term kind of ongoing project, we think, for the town to keep on improving the corridor. The corridor is pretty attractive really right now. There's some work to be done in some properties, but overall, it's a, you've got a great asset there. And then on the other side of the, most of the, on the other side of the highway, and actually on both sides, but for the most part, up in the hills, you've got a great agricultural sector of the town. We spent some time in the committee talking about that. We had a meeting with the farmers. And just a couple of points here, you know, keeping agriculture as a business profitable is really important. The town does not have a lot to do with that directly, but can be supportive in terms of your, your zoning and also supporting the marketing efforts and some of the things you're doing around the waterfront. And also, was the idea of creating an agricultural enhancement and farmland protection plan. We kind of floated that idea to the farmers and farmland owners. And if that's something that they wanted to do, we'd encourage that to happen because that's a great way to kind of, for that sector to get higher points for grants, especially for things like purchase of development rights and some of those things that are very competitive. But the town having such a strong sector would be a great candidate. We talked about that quite a bit, about how that can help families pass land on intergenerational, intergenerationally, and still capture some equity without having to sell it for development. And we spent quite a bit of time talking about, looking at the waterfront itself, the area around the, both hamlets. In particular, the focus of Milton Landing Park rose as something to take action early on. The train station is a great anchor, and the town commissioned a master plan for the Milton Landing Park. And it's set up to help organize and accommodate passive recreation. This is an overview of the plan image. And you can see there Sands Avenue here, Dock Road coming down, the pier here, train station, the sewer plant, this is the stream that comes down through. So this area is all going to be like a passive park. The town's done a lot to improve that. And there's, there's a fair amount of work still to do. It's well underway. The town recently submitted three grants that would address the improvements of the park. The total funds requested were approximately $1.6 million. And the three areas that the funding was requested were three different sources. One, a park development grant from New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation. That would address the upper park, the Sands Avenue section. Another grant was submitted to the Department of State under the Local Waterfront Revitalization Program. That's the same agency that funded the, this work. I want to back up a little bit to the state parks. It's been a partner of the town. They helped fund the acquisition of that property for the town. And so you've already got these nice partnerships with these agencies. And Empire State Development and a contingent from the town, that's the state's economic development agency, met with the Megan Taylor and folks there earlier this summer, kind of promoted the idea of, of the Milton Landing as a anchor for economic development for the Hudson Valley, to repair the pier and do the park improvements, and that was very well received. So a third proposal was submitted to them for approximately $1 million to support rebuilding the pier, that project. And so real quick, I'll run you through these. So this is the upper park area for Sands Avenue. This would be just all kind of passive, passive with parking here, an open lawn area, and walk-around and gardens. This would be an overlook. This is where the dog park is, community gardens, a drop-off area for folks. And I'll just show you some views, what it would, the idea of the place. This would be looking from Sands Avenue across that field and the walk and the overlook area. And this is just kind of conceptual rendering of what that might be like, okay, looking, looking from that spot. Be a beautiful place to just go to. I see that, this getting a lot of visits once it's done. And then the idea of the area, you know, kind of from there to the south where the dog park is, you know, setting it up, that up a little bit more formally, the guard, the community gardens, maybe some type of a kiosk or shelter or something. And this, the master plan, it was set up so the town can build this, you know, do the heavy work now, the grading and filling and paths first, driveways, and then they can, the finishwork can happen over time, as funds are available. And then, so this set up nicely for a separate area for one grant application. We submitted another grant application for the lower park area around the train station. Again, the town, a lot of work has been done cleaning this up, bringing a pathway down there, cleaning up the stream, adding more parking, you know, some, some other improvements. And I got to say, you have to have these plans to apply for these grants. I should say, you, you can apply for a grant without these plans, but it's not going to be supported because it doesn't look like you're serious. And so that's why having these plans and having this work done, having the surveys and all that, the, anybody you partner with in any business relationship wants to know that you're going to be successful together. And so that's why having this work is really, really important, because they know that the town is serious, they know the town's committed, and they know the town has a vision of where it wants to be. And that's why this is so, so important to have. Here's just another vignette. This is kind of, you come around Dock Road and look out, just kind of formalizing that, that'd be up to the area where there's some pick, some camping allowed. And this would be a look from the train station, might be a little playground in there, walking paths, kind of another passive, passive area. This could be a really beautiful spot. And then the, the big investment that's needed is to repair and reconstruct the pier. And the town again has done the work, has got a engineering feasibility study completed. The town's working on getting permits for that. I think they're very close to having those in hand. And so this is about a million-dollar project. And, but having this pier will open up a whole new set of possibilities for the town, for a lot of folks to come into town, buy water, big boats, small boats. The clear water could dock here. The, there's a big passenger ship being worked on called the SS Columbia that can come here as well. And so the overall vision for the, this waterfront area is just even more of a, of a people place. And this is a rendering that we did to kind of show everyone here, folks in town and the folks in the state, what the town envisions as this being a people place, you know, kayak launch, you know, you've, you know, just a really great passive park. And you're making the most out of this one little piece of land, I think, that you have in town. It's really a great vision, and we're very grateful to be part of it, actually. So, so with this, I mean, with this comes, you know, more, more benefits, more activities, the idea that, and folks are doing this, folks are investing in the town, they're vote vesting in the hamlets. You've got a lot of, I call, these aren't big national chains necessarily coming in. These are folks who, you know, from here or came here, they're investing in the town, right, and improving the hamlets, putting a lot of money in, a lot of creative ideas, both in Marlborough and in Milton Hamlets, you know, food, entertainment, you know, tying to the agriculture in the area. The great stuff is happening. And so you've got really a lot of positive trends happening. And we see the waterfront, too, being part of it, having better access down there, creating better, you know, kayak launches that anybody can use, you know, waterfront views. You've got great opportunities in both hamlets to see glimpses of the river. That could, that would be part of it. And, and so that would be part of it. The other part that, that's been talked about for a long time, I think, is getting some legs now, is the Marlborough Mills Waterfall Walkway, okay? And the town, again, was successful getting a grant to help continue to move that project along. The Milton Economic Development Committee put that together, Howard became a part of that, and Howard Baker. And so this is a recreation heritage trail that would follow the waterfall, the waterway down initially from Route 9W at the Falcon, and then coming down to the, the hamlet, the lower part of the hamlet there where the, the creek enters the Hudson, which is really a tidal estuary, okay? It's a really, really neat area. And so that goes through old mill ruins, and it's really very interesting and very beautiful. It's going to be a tremendous walk. There's a great vision the town has for that. And that'll be a project that'll be working on, continue to be worked on now. And part of the, a big part of it is to connect this to the agri-tourism industry in town. So your, the whole plan, the whole strategy is not just fragmented pieces. It's all, it's all connected, and it's all meant to help build off of each other. And so building these connections, again, you've got folks that are investing in the town. I understand there's eight wineries in the town right now, which is, I think, more wineries per town than any town I can think of in New York State. Great, making great wine, you know, not just good wine for the Hudson Valley, but great wine by any measure, which is really something. There's, there's a Hudson Valley Cab, Cabernet Franc Coalition that's been formed, and this group is, you know, identifying this variety of grape as something that could be a, if you would, a trademark or signature for the town in the Hudson Valley. And it creates a very wonderful wine. And you have all these, you have these folks that are working together. You've got Meet Me in Marlborough, the Wine Trail, the Farm Trail, and all the different farms and ag businesses in town. So it's all, you know, kind of part of a, a bigger picture of, you know, connecting the dots, if you would, for economic development. There's a lot more in the plan that I'm covering tonight. There's economic development aspects, infrastructure, sewer, you know, fiscal issues, those kind of things. But that's an overview, I think, of the projects. It's set up as a generic environmental impact statement, which means we've looked at the effect of this on the future of the town in terms of land use, you know, environment, et cetera, traffic. And so part of that is there's a comment period, there's a public comment period, and those, it's set up now, it's open until September 5th or 10 days after the town board closes the hearing, whichever is later, okay? And that's the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the board?
I have a couple.
Sure.
Grants you applied for, are they all just grants or are they matching grants?
They're, they're all matching grants, and so...
So if we were to get the whole 1.6 million, we'd have to come up with 1.6 million out of the town budget to match?
1.6 million. Part of the match that we propose would be a work at, force account, town highway folks, right? And so a large part of the match would be, I think the majority of the match would come from force account, from the town highway department, as well as donated materials. And then the second part of the match would be cash, so the town would, if you're awarded a grant, the town would have to, you know...
They have no choice. Once you're awarded a grant, you have to match. You have to, you're in.
Yeah, you're, you're in. Well, you cannot accept it, but yeah, I would say, yeah. Yeah, you're, you're in, right. You're in for the, you're in.
Other question I had for you...
Some, yeah, and I just want to let you know that two of the grants are 50, around a 50/50, and one is a 75 percent match, give or take. Yep.
Okay. The other question I had, I'm pretty familiar with Marlborough, I've been here for 62 years. This, this waterfall, you know, what prop, whose property is that on at this time?
The waterfall itself?
This, yeah. That, that part that goes down to the, down to the river. Are you talking about...
Yeah.
That's part of the grant. It's multiple owners, and that's part of the reason...
Right. So even to get access to this, you have to get right of ways, shouldn't we?
Sure, sure. Yeah, right. Exactly. Yeah, no, no, that's important to note, right.
That's the grant...
It's important to note, that would be...
You can grant all you want, but if we don't get right of ways, it's...
Well, that's the grant that we just got, and that's the purpose of that grant, to try to get that, that...
Get, try to get it, by the way.
Right, right.
If I own part of that property, I'm going to hold you to your feet to the fire.
No, there's no...
Well, some of the, some of, you know, some of it's owned by Tilcon, whom we've been in discussions with.
Yeah.
Some of it's owned by the Falcon.
Some is owned by Mr. Gracioli.
Some of it is, yes, and a very small portion of it.
Some's owned by the town, too.
Some is owned by the town. I mean, some of it's very, very steep. I don't know that anybody would really do anything in terms of development, so, you know...
It's not a matter of the development. I mean, you know, people have something, somebody...
Yeah, so that is, that, yeah.
So that, I think that's, no, that's part of the work that would have to be done because, no, a trail project is a development project, and you'd have to get permission from...
You have a grant for that particular...
Right, to get the, to those folks, right. And, you know, no, it's, it's, it's no small task. It's no small task to make that happen. But it'd be an amazing thing to have it happen, as you know, because it's so gorgeous in there.
Oh, I have no problem with it.
Yeah, no, no, it's, it's a lot of work and a lot of, a lot of, I know, a lot of conversation.
That's the grant that we got from the Greenway just recently.
Right.
Yep.
No, I'm not, I'm not against any of that stuff.
No, I'm just, I'm telling you, the grant that we received from Greenway was to...
Do that.
Develop that and look at the owners of the property.
And, and...
And maybe we won't get all the owners, but maybe we'll get a portion of them. So it'll be a little different vision than we initially thought of, but, you know, you got to try.
Yeah.
I'm not telling you not to try.
Yeah.
Just wanted to know what's going on.
No, it's, yep.
Will we put this on the website?
Yep, please. Please do. Yep.
Anybody else have any...
John, I just wanted to, I, I thank you so much, and this is a great presentation. I appreciate it, and it's been great working with you, and we're not done yet, of course. You mentioned the Route 9W corridor study, and we are, you know, in the midst of that now and working on access management plans. And one of the things they're, they're talking about also is this, the business corridor overlay district and possible some minor adjustments to that. And I told them that you were open to that, and you, we kind of talked about that in terms of, what they're talking about is making it more nodal, not just a one big overlay on 9W, but maybe some pieces that are more, you know, oriented toward the hamlet, which have some different, um, rules of regulations, that's probably not the best word, but, and then some, maybe some open sections along 9W that would still be the overlay district, but be considered maybe greener or something like that. Is that something, that's something we have talked about, right?
Well, I think the idea is in the plan that, you know, you don't necessarily need to have the entire highway strip commercial.
Right.
You know, that, especially when you deal with infrastructure and access to, look, where the development, where you want the development to occur. You know, for example, we talked about this area, the area north, you know, and getting some sewer, more better sewer there, and you're working on those things. So, yes, more nodal type of development, because you can just see downward when you open the whole thing up. But I also think part of it is not to take away the town's thought of, if you have a former commercial property, you know, it's not in the know, to allow folks to, you know, reuse that.
Right.
But then, you know, the other part of it is, and we could talk, we'll talk more about that if you want when that comes in, but...
Yeah.
The other part of it is, is there's only so much market for commercial development, and so...
But I, yeah, just not to interrupt, but I think the idea, when we created the overload, the overlay zone, was to basically make it a unified, basically corridor. I mean, the problem with it, when I came on the board and when I lived here my entire life, is that it was a hodgepodge of development. It was like a casserole. There was nothing that had any continuity about it.
Mm-hmm.
So the idea was to open it up. We're not pushing the residential out nor the residential developers, but what we were doing was, we were correcting the problem that the businesses that were established there pre-1978 zoning could not be sold. The buildings could not be reused.
Yeah.
And we had somebody who could not sell their commercial, what, their, their commercial property because it was zoned, you know, RF. So we had that problem. So we're not forcing everybody to develop a commercial, but through basically attrition, I mean, that's what the corridor should basically be.
Right. I think where we're, the, the suggestion was it shouldn't be just totally uniform and, and maybe there are areas where we should concentrate on sewer and maybe not the entire strip at the beginning.
Well, I think what you're going to have is the issue is if we, you know, everybody in this town, this has always got me since I was 11 years old, so we said, you know, we need sewer, we need sewer, we need sewer. So what we found out through a lot of hard work is we're no longer eligible for USDAT. All right? We found out that that's completely done and gone with.
Right.
So I basically, now, now we're left with going to a bunch of residential property owners and saying, hey, by the way, if you want sewer, pay in. All right? As opposed to where now, if you have a business, who's going to come in here and say, you know what, I want to put this here, I do have the correct zoning, oh, I need sewer? Yeah, I'll make that investment because I'll, that, I'll return that investment within five years. So if you want to start, like, putting in residential areas in this, you're going to break the whole cycle.
Well, I think, I, my only comment was, the Route 9W corridor study guys might have some comments on the, the overlay district, and the suggestion was maybe those could be worked into the comprehensive plan. And my, my question to you, John, is that's still a possibility, basically? Is it still something we, we can discuss?
Yeah, and I, I would say this, I'd say, Howard, the, the 9W discussion is probably worth a whole meeting.
Right, right.
And that's something right on itself, because it's very, as, you know, as, you know, Councilman Tony Keneck was saying, it's, it's complicated.
Right.
You know, and, and it's, it's a delicate balance about how you, how it's handled.
Right.
But I, I think...
Well, I think the thing is going back, is, you know, my first year or two here, we had multiple board meetings about the corridor, right or wrong, Scott and Eddie, and Howard, you were there. I mean, we had multiple meetings.
Yes, we did.
In order to create that zone.
Right.
So I don't want to open that bag up.
Well, we have a different set of eyes now, and, and people, you know, with suggestions. So maybe, you know, it's just a, I don't, it's a fine tuning, maybe, a slight change, a different way looking.
Guess what else? What, what are the suggestions of fine tuning? What, what's...
I don't know, specifically, other than maybe not making it. We just have one overlay district now that comes down and sits on top of 9W.
Right.
Maybe there would be difference, maybe there would be different sections of that overlay district, maybe the Hamlets, the Milton and Marlboro would have more concentrated, that would be where we'd really go after the, you know, water and sewer extension, and what's in between.
Both, both Hamlets have water and sewer, and every time a business comes to either one of our Hamlets, we are, we are stuck with the problems of parking, so, I mean.
Well, not, not, the, the Hamlet is, we don't have sewer in, you know, north of the Hamlet of Marlboro and so forth. I didn't wanna open up Pandora's Box here, I just think it's some.
That's good, I just don't, I don't, I don't understand what's the, what's the.
I don't, I don't see where stopping people from doing.
No, but I don't understand what the, the overlay has anything to do with investing into sewer and a Hamlet. The, the overlay is, is really like a simplistic, generic thing we did, to say, if you're residential, you could stay residential, but if you wanna be commercial, you can be commercial.
Right.
And basically, if you become commercial, you can't go back to residential, it's very simplistic.
Yes, and it was simplistic, and, and maybe we need to tweak it a little bit more to encourage maybe different development.
Well, you encourage, yeah, I can see that.
And closer to the Hamlets, a different kind of development than you would in the middle section between the Hamlets.
Yeah, I guess.
That's the only, that's, that's the only, yeah.
Funny, if anybody wants to stay that way, they can, we're not forcing anybody to go, you know, that's it.
It's not a matter of forcing, it's a matter of encouraging the kind of.
Encourage more.
Access management was a big part of it as well, yeah.
Well, access management, we can do with road cuts, working with DOT, I mean, we're basically gonna be bound with what DOT tells us anyway, it's their highway, not ours, our town, it's their highway, through federalism, they've got a little bit more clout than we do.
I think Howard's just saying that it might be a different way of approaching the overlay zone.
All, yeah.
I just think I'm fine with the way it is right now, I don't wanna, we've spent a lot of time.
Well, I don't know if, I don't know if that's true, Ed, I don't know if it's.
I know, I know if I'm fine.
Well, I, all, all I'm saying is, let's, let's, you know, there's possible other ideas that are we open to.
I just think we're beating a dead horse right now.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the only opposition we had to the overlay zone was people who are afraid of, like, strip malls, which pretty much don't really exist anymore, so, or aren't really coming.
I, I thought that it was non-conforming, pre-existing businesses, it kinda like Empire State, and the new people that are coming, Frank, and those people, Eckers, and.
Couldn't sell his property.
Right, so now they become.
It was crazy.
Unless it was a well drill.
Unless it was a well drill.
Eligible, right.
Well, yeah, if you're non-conformer, now you can become conforming, by coming to it, you could be, you could change the, the use of your business, right?
Yeah.
Thank you, John.
It's, it's just.
That's fine.
You should've been at those meetings.
But I agree, I mean, there could be some things that could be put into incentivize people.
There, there are, that's, that's, I think that's what we're trying to get, get to. So, I just wanted to make sure that John was aware of those discussions, and I think you are, and maybe we need to build those into the comprehensive plan, that's all.
Yeah, and I'm sure that, once that study comes out, that 9W study.
Yeah.
There'll be a lot coming out, so, and, uh, and maybe you could talk about the 9W corridor study later on in the.
I will.
Okay. Thanks, John, I appreciate it.
Speaking of 9W, how are we doing with?
Thank you, John.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
Hold on, we're gonna get there, let's not jump, uh, James?
I have an agenda, so there's nothing. The chief's over here today, he's got a lot of papers. Oh, my gosh. I hope those aren't questions.
Good evening, James.
No, no, these aren't questions, you already opened it up for, for questions, this, these are for comments, hopefully, it's opened up for comments. Yeah, there's a lot of paper in this document, and I'm very glad that you're gonna give me till September to go through it all.
Yes.
But I thought I would get you started.
You and the county, you and county planning are gonna go through it.
Good.
They're looking at it also.
Oh, that's, that's good, and I hope there are other people that'll be looking through it, but anyway, I did go through the Appendix A, there's a couple of questions in here, there's a couple of comments, but most of it's on format and making it easier to reference things.
Okay.
And I'm going to leave you with this at the end of the day, and, um, you can start working on it while I start working on the rest of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, James, appreciate it.
James Garofalo.
Thanks.
Don't get it.
Thanks, James.
Thank you. So, moving right along, uh, motion to approve the agenda.
I'll motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, guys.
I'll abstain, because I haven't had a chance to read it.
Okay.
Since I got this afternoon.
Okay, it was mailed out, emailed.
You know how I am, email.
Well, that's not everybody's fault, if you don't do email.
All I'm, all I'm telling you is that I got it, I was told, I was told by you when you came into office, I'd have it in hard copy on Friday. Yeah.
My floors were being waxed.
That's a good news.
This is the only time you didn't receive it, I said, I don't know why you're making a big deal out of it.
I'm not making a big deal about it, I'm just saying.
Okay.
Staying from it.
Okay.
All right, this, this is going back to the old days.
So, uh, motion to approve minutes from the July twenty-four, twenty-seventeen Town Board Meeting?
Yes, I would make that motion.
I need a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, move, motion to approve minutes from the July tenth, twenty-seventeen Public Hearing Amendment, Chapter one fifty-five, to the, to add Section one fifty-five dot thirty-two dot two, which is the solar code.
Yes, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, moved.
Cause I was out there.
Authorized payment of bills for the amount of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents.
I'll make that motion.
Need a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, moved. Comments on the agenda? If none, we'll move on to reports of departments and boards. Supervisor's report, August twenty-eighteen, met with the Tilcon representative, John Cooney, and Howard Baker, at the Tilcon Nyack headquarters. During that meeting, we're informed that John Cooney is no longer the CO, that Mr. Sullivan is, and, uh, we sent John, uh, our request about the land that Tilcon owns in Marlboro, which is around three hundred acres, and we haven't received a response yet, Howard?
Nope.
Okay.
No.
I attended the celebration of two hundred years of farming at the Clark Farm in Milton, it was very pleasurable, attended the Elster County Volunteers Fireman Parade in Milton, great job by Milton Fire Department, Alan, sure it was a lot of work, appreciate it. Met with Mickey Jamal, Assemblyman Scott Tonos, Elster County Economic Development Director, Susan Holt, and Scott Parker to discuss Route 9W development. So, at this meeting, Ed, Mickey Jamal called me up and asked me if I could arrange a meeting with Mr. Assemblyman Frank Scott Tonos, I said I would, and, um, I also asked the Economic Development Development Director, Susan Holt, to come to that meeting. So, we met, and basically, uh, Mr. Parker and Mickey Jamal told me, uh, many times, it's not the town's fault, we're just not moving forward because of budgetary reasons, so a lot of things went over budget. And one of the things was the Central Hudson and Verizon telephone poles, so, um, I asked Mr. Scott Tonos to set up a meeting with the, with Central Hudson and the Verizon. Also, we talked about, uh, the, uh, the, the thing that the town and the school has for incentives, and, uh, so, Mr. Jamal asked me if I could get that paperwork to him, I s, and I printed it out and sent it up, basically, it's fifty percent the first year, then it goes down five percent each year for ten years, so, uh, so he has that now, and so hopefully that'll help a little bit. So, the project is still committed, he commits to the project, it's just taking a little longer than he thought, and I think the situation is, I think it's also a bank thing, and, and like I said, they just overruns what, moving everything to the west by John, and the DOT, uh, roadwork that they have to do, so, they're a little over budget, so, we're just gonna try to help them out with the, uh, the Central Hudson and Verizon pole thing. So, moving on, we, I met with Mr. and Mrs. Cool to discuss their bed and breakfast project. Subsequently, from that meeting, uh, the Cool's did send a letter to myself and Mr. Corcoran, I followed through, and the, uh, the letter reflected that they would be, uh, the bed and breakfast under one fifty-five dash one, which is owner occupied, and also, I think it did a, uh, also, the, the planning board asked about the fifty percent, and they were in compliance with the fifty cents, so, at the next meeting, they should be good to go, but who knows? So, that was, uh, that was a good thing. Met with Park Manager Tom Schroder and Donna Mead, Scott had called me up and asked me to meet, and Donna had a punch list, and so we went over that punch list with Tom, and we got that accomplished. Met with Highway Superintendent Gail Appeler, and Dave Zambito, Tom Schroder, and representatives of the baseball organization, also with Tom Corcoran, uh, at Cluett Shance Park, to go over what, how we can make those two fields up at the park usable, and so, uh, one of the things that we discovered that is, uh, Mr. Appeler is gonna do some drainage on the one to the south, right? And also, Dave Zambito pulled all that sand, you know, you, you know, because they were raking it the wrong way, I guess, and Tom confirmed that, so Mr. Zambito went up there and looks a lot better. So, that was a good meeting. Met with Patty Brooks and Councilman Baker, and Dave Zambito on the Gateway Site Plan, that was the site plan that Patty Brooks did for us, across the street from Saint Mary's. It looks like we could put the stone walls on the DOT right away, so we're not infringing on Tilcon or the Saint Mary's Parkway, so that was a great meeting. Attended the, the meeting of the economic development, that was at Mr. Falco's, worked on the annual senior picnic, that was great, and, uh, and I guess I mentioned this before, but we recovered fifty thousand dollars and got that check, and now it's back into the building fund, and that was the train station roof from Frank Scott Tonos from ten years ago. Also, wanted to let everybody know that we're, uh, Frank Scott Tonos also gave us a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar memory item for sidewalks in Marlboro, we finished all that paperwork, and right now it's at the Dazni. Want to thank a couple of people, Steve Bianco did a great job on the Bachi Courts, excellent job, and also, uh, the Chief of Marlboro, we had a problem with our flag, and he called in the, the Middle Hope people, farming, that have a ladder, and they tangled that up, untangled that up, so, that's my report, thank you.
Thank you.
Tom?
Monthly Building Inspector Report, July two thousand seventeen, Certificate of Occupancy one, Request for Information sixteen, Building Extensions five, Fire Inspections ten, Fire Calls one, Stop Work Orders one, ZBA Applications one, Order to Remedy twelve, Complaints thirty-three, Burn Permits issued twenty-five, Building Permits thirty-one, two-one family, one generator, one boiler, two tank removals, two pools, one shed, two roofs, two signs, two barns, six renovations additions, five decks, two wireless communications, two carports, one solar panel, for an estimated cost of building of six hundred and seventy-seven thousand forty-one dollars. Monthly Receipt, Certificate of Occupancy one fifty, Request for Information sixteen hundred, Building Extensions five hundred, Building Permits sixty-nine twenty-seven thirty-eight cents, Fire Inspections five hundred and twenty, ZBA Escrow Fees seven hundred, ZBA Applications three hundred, Zoning Fees one thousand, for a total monthly receipt of ten thousand one hundred and seventy-seven thirty-eight, Total Miles six hundred and eighty-eight miles, Gas Usage forty-five gallons.
Tom, uh, we, I see that, uh, we have two-one family, that's new homes?
Yes.
You know how many homes up to date in two thousand and seventeen?
Top of my head, I'm gonna say ten to twelve.
So, that's up from two thousand and sixteen?
To, well, two thousand and sixteen, we did ten, so as of now, we're, we're ten, I, I know I'm getting three or four more, I've got builders, spec builders. Yeah, spec builders are actually building spec houses again, so, and they seem to be selling.
So, while I got you up here, uh, we have these two signs, uh, one is for Buttermilk Falls, which, on the top, it says Marlboro Town Hall, on the bottom, it says Milton, Welcome to Milton, I sent these out, and also, uh, in Marlboro, by the industrial park, uh, we have a sign here that's from Thomas O. Miller, Copart, Cigar Box, Pods, Brooklyn Bowling Company, Welcome to Marlboro. And so, I think by motion, the Town Board has to approve these because of our new sign law, is that correct?
Correct, on, on both of those properties, the, the owner, Thomas O. Miller, and, and the Case Milton, Robert Pollock, they own the properties, but under the current sign law, the entity would have to be on the owned property, uh, since they're not, uh, if the, if the benefit benefits a town in some way, and not just the individual, then the Town Board, under motion, could approve that and allow me to give the sign permits, and in both cases, uh, here we get a Town Hall sign, um, and, uh, you know, Welcome to Milton, and it's a fairly nice sign, they're working on it now, um, at no cost to the town, and down in Marlboro, where we wish we could get one on the corner of Weston Avenue to help the, the, the businesses in that hamlet, uh, a spot, but there isn't, but at least at this point, on the corner of E, uh, CVS, on Riverview Drive, on the other side, where Thomas O. Miller did purchase the property, they're looking to get some exposure for their retail business, and have invited the, the other occupants of Riverview Drive to join in, uh, on the sign, so it'll benefit multiple businesses and ultimately benefit the town. So, if it's, uh, if the Board is in favor of that, and then does by motion, I'll include the minutes in the building permit, and allow each applicant to apply for the building permit.
So, uh.
I make a motion to approve both.
I'm fine, like I said, the only thing in my email was the ROO, RO.
Yeah, and it seems like everybody's okay.
Everybody's fine with that, that's all.
You know what's funny, when people see this, they're not even gonna know that many businesses were down there.
Oh, I know, I'm, I love the sign.
We all know about.
Right.
I bet you no one even knew there's that many businesses down there.
Everyone's good with it.
Maybe the truck and trucks. And there's actually a couple more down there.
So, how much is the fee for the permit?
Um, would be a hundred dollars.
So, uh, would it be proper for the Board to waive both, uh, if the Board desires, waive the hundred dollar, uh?
Um, that would be in the Board's discretion, I, I would believe, if, if either one was to get that waiver, would be the one closest to the Town Hall, because it is a Town Hall sign.
Right.
You know, showing where we are, we don't have a sign on the corridor at this moment. The other one is a, is a commercial entity, I, I don't feel there's a reason to waive that one, but that's.
The one in Milton, I would be okay with it.
Yeah, everybody.
He's actually advertising the Town Hall.
Right, right, so, how's everybody feel about waiving the hundred dollars for Robert Pollock, I think it's a good thing, show his faith.
That's your discretion, either one of them, again, they're, it's not a, it's not a huge fee, but.
I, I mean, are we either gonna do it for, for one, or both, or none? I mean, I can't, you know, if I was the owner of T L Miller, and I found, I just, I don't know, it's a hundred dollar permit fee.
Again, that's at your discretion, again, the only thing that the Milton sign has in.
I wanna be a Scrooge, but.
In lieu of the other sign, is that we, you know, we're advertising them, we don't have a sign.
Yeah.
We, we never purchased a sign, I think it's, it was something well overdue that we needed to do, to at least know on the 9W corridor where the, the Town Hall is.
Right.
Uh, and that gives us the.
And, yeah.
But again.
So, I'd be in favor of waiving the hundred dollars for, uh, for, uh, the, uh, Milton sign.
You did it?
Yeah.
Would you?
I'll second, I, I second that one, because again, he's actually got a sign that's promoting the Town Hall, and, you know, that cost him money already, so, the other one, I agree, that one's, it's just for the businesses more than it is, but, I would, I would second that, for that one.
So, uh, do you, do you wanna poll the Board on that motion?
Yeah.
Please, on the waiver.
To approve the, to waive the fee for Robert Pollock?
Yeah.
I would first get a, approval of the signs, please.
Yeah, first, a motion, yeah, to approve the two signs.
I got a motion from Scott.
I'll second.
I'll second, okay.
And all in favor, for the two signs?
Aye.
Okay, so that one's done now.
And then I have the motion for waiving Robert Pollock's fee.
Yes.
Are we waiving just Robert Pollock's, or both?
Yes.
Just Robert Pollock?
Yes.
Why not both?
Yeah.
Why not both?
Yeah.
That's my brother.
He has our, you know, town hall. It's a good percentage of the time of the sign.
So the motion is to... You press the motion?
No.
Al, motion.
My motion. I said I'd be in favor of it.
Scott seconded it. Scott seconded it. I just questioned it. So we're just talking about Mr. Pollak, not both of them.
So that's carried. Okay.
Do you want to poll the board or you want...
Yeah.
Yeah, poll the board, Colleen, please.
Okay. Supervisor, let's add...
Yes.
Councilman Corcoran.
Yes.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman Mullen Alley.
Yes.
Councilman Koenig.
No.
You can't do that.
We got three.
I'm friends with Robert, but I can't do that.
I got four.
I'd say yes.
Good job, Eddie. Good job, Al. Yeah, I understand. I get Al too. It's a little, I know Robert couldn't afford it.
Where's the chief?
It's not that he can afford it. It's just a point. Who can afford it?
It's the point, though. He's making a sign for us, which is like...
If I was the other guy, I'd do this right signs.
Yeah, because I guess in the instance of the CBS sign, just to be out there is just that it benefits... I'm sorry, the Thomas O. Miller sign and CBS had to pay for theirs and Marla Winn had to pay for theirs and the haircut in place had to pay for theirs. They were commercial entities. And I would agree that Mr. Pollak, again, and this is my opinion, I respect all five votes, but Mr. Pollak's sign does advertise the town hall. And that's my only caveat on that one sign is that the Marlboro Town Hall has a sign.
He paid for a sign for the town hall that we didn't have to pay for. So that's the only reason I would approve it.
Thanks, Tom.
Hey, chief. Thank you, Tom.
Monthly report for July 2017. Personal injury auto accidents, one. Fatal, zero. Property damage accidents, 13. Accidents not requiring report, one. For a total of 15 for the month. Summons is issued, vehicle and traffic, 120. Parking violations, eight. Complaint activity, total blotter entries is 332. Total arrests for the month are 30. Telephone calls handled, 1,757 calls. Police mileage for the month, 12,330 miles with a consumption of 1,006.467 gallons. I just want to take a quick second. We had some aging radar units. The county replaced one of them and threw the old one away. And DCGS replaced a second one for us, giving us a new unit with dual antennas so we can run radar in both directions at the same time. It's a pretty neat unit. It's roughly $5,000 for both units, so that was a good thing. They gave it to us because...
Who gave it to us?
One came from Stop DWI in Olster County. The other came from New York State DCGS. They do the yearly, the state does the yearly calibrations on the machines. And the one unit we had was so old that they no longer service it. So whether they felt bad or we begged hard enough, I'm not sure, but they gave us one. A dual unit and it's like, that unit's like $3,000.
Does anyone sit in the middle of those?
No, they're using the plate readers when they do that. They're getting the license plates as they drive by. Very, very active. I bet you, I never put the numbers to it, but I bet you one in every 10 cars is suspended, whether it be the driver or the car itself. The guys come in, do aggressive driving and they love the plate reader and it works very, very well. Very well. Second thing is we got two grants. One from Olster County Stop DWI for $4,500, which is an increase from last year. And another one from New York State Governor Traffic Safety for $3,500, which is also an increase from last year. We had an audit done by the New York State Governors Traffic Safety Committee or whatever they call them on our grant stuff and they are very impressed with our grant paperwork. They did give us some pointers that might help us even increase our funding even more that we get from them. So we'll work on that for next year.
And who did the grant applications?
Who does them? Jennifer and I.
Very good.
They're kind of, I don't want to take too much credit for it because they're kind of standard. You just kind of refill them and change the dates every year. We do need to update our stats and stuff.
Come on, Jerry, that's all the stuff.
We do have to update our stats.
You gotta tell us you work 20 hours.
I'll take credit when it's due, but they're pretty, these two particular grants are pretty simple. The other thing I want to do is thank Highway for the parade for the fire department. Without them, and also Senior Day, without them, we couldn't do the traffic that we've done. They help out tremendously. Gail, thank you and the guys. It's well appreciated.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Couple things, Jerry.
Sure, go.
I understand you did have a pretty big bust utilizing the urgent program.
Yes, we did.
Which was good. But just as we're seeing this opiate crisis go on and now they're to be clearing the federal emergency, what are you seeing monthly from our town?
I can get exact numbers. We do a monthly overdose report that goes to the Sheriff's Department. I think I share that report with you via email, I think.
We only get the blotters.
Oh, okay. I'll start sending you the opium overdose reports. I know I send it out to the fellows, so I'll send it to you guys, too. Usually three to five, but it's not always opiates. Sometimes it's pills, sometimes it's Advil, sometimes it's alcohol. It still goes in the overdose report because it's handled as an overdose. We've been lucky, not too many drug-related deaths. I contribute that to the Narcan. It works very, very well.
Yeah, I'm just asking just because I have friends that are in the emergency response, you know, venue. And I'm getting it from the chief of this department, the chief of this department because they run medicals and I'm getting stories that they're doing for a week.
Oh.
12 a month.
Ellenville. Ellenville, 15, 18 a month.
Well, there's some other ones, too. Right across the road.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, different. And I'll share that report with you. And it breaks it down by department in the county of Olster. Doesn't go across the Duchess or anything. It's just, it's put together by the Sheriff's Department. And it gives a lot of information, you know, location, type of drugs, what was the overdose? Was Narcan used? Was it fatal? I think there were seven fatals in the last overdose report throughout the county. You know, one is too many.
Monthly report?
Comes out monthly, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll start. I know I have this past month. I'll send it to you and then I'll start, I'll put you on the email list for the regular.
You know, countrywide is a big problem.
It is. It is. Again, I have my own opinions on that, but the general push for the nationwide is to provide resources for the habitual drug user to be able to rescue themselves or have somebody with them that's going to rescue them when they overdose. I don't particularly agree with that theory, but it seems to be working with the Narcan. We're saving people and that's the important thing.
Chief, any other questions? Jerry, are you still accepting applications for the speed trailer?
Applications?
Location.
Places to put it. Oh, absolutely, absolutely. We did lend it, the Sheriff's Department called and asked us to lend it to Platakill. They've had it for the last two weeks. We'll be picking it up this week.
Okay.
First on the list is North Road.
North Road, thank you.
When this comes back. But absolutely send me an email, shoot me a text, whatever. We'll get it to wherever you guys think we should put it.
Got a request on the other end of the town.
That information helps. You want it in front yard again?
What's that?
Front yard?
Always in my front yard, always. But no, this is somewhere else in town. I'll send you an email.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Could you give your name, please? Stand up, stand up and give your name?
Of course.
Of course. Thank you.
I'm the one who's on the wall. I'm the one who's doing it.
Eric, good. Thank you.
Dr. Renee, pretend you're the license plate scanners. Once that information is collected, where is it stored and who has access to it and for how long is it stored?
So DMV real allocates the file every 24 hours, which updates the files. So a particular plate could be suspended today and okay tomorrow, depending on how it updates. Once we hit a plate, once we hit a plate and it comes back as suspended, it's saved in the computer that the plate reader's hooked to. And then, of course, the paperwork is forwarded to the court because that's a misdemeanor arrest. So locally, we have an arrest report and a case file on each and every one. And that could be, it's not just suspended plates or suspended licenses. If there's a warrant for somebody, like the registration of a car, when they drive by, that warrant will pop up. Anything that's associated with the name that's registered to that plate. Could be sex offender, could be gang-related. There's a slew of, I think 16 or 17 different categories that it checks against. And every, the way the plate reader works is depending on the type of hit, it dictates a certain noise so you can do it by ear rather than having to watch the screen. Like Ed was making reference, they like to sit in the yellow hash marks here and down by the middle school because they get traffic on both directions and there's two plate, there's two cameras. So you get north and southbound traffic. The problem with it is it takes a couple of seconds for the machine to catch up and actually get the data back to you. So you gotta go search for the car once it drives by. Once you get used to using it, it's not that bad. Very productive, very productive.
Now, if a vehicle passes, if it's completely and totally legal and every, is that information collected by that vehicle or is it not collected?
Nope. It's collected and stored. Collected and stored. It keeps every plate that it reads in a database.
His question is how long, do you know?
Well, we've had it a few years and I've never heard of it purging, so, yeah. I don't know. I never actually went back to look at the data, to be honest with you. I don't know how long it's been.
Whether the DMV uses surveillance, will surveillance happen?
That's part of a plate reader, sure. We can, we can put in Jerry Krikose's plate and every time I've passed a plate reader, it'll hit that, we were looking for that for some reason. We're BOLO for it. Be on the lookout. So, yeah, it could be a surveillance device. That's the idea of the cameras and plate readers that are on the speed trailer. We, when part of that, the Sheriff's Department wanted us to join in with them, is they wanted the ability to put that trailer wherever there might be hotspots throughout the county, including Marlboro. Down south of the county, there's very little data collection here. So they went into that agreement with us and that's how we got the speed trailer. That collects plates, too, only that transfers to the Sheriff's Department. And it was very handy on the hoax of the abduction. We were able to track her car because the speed trailer was on 9W. So we put her plate number into the search database and it popped up when she went by the speed trailer. It was two days prior, but, you know, it still helped in that investigation. Very handy tools, very, very handy. Wish we could get more of them, except they're $20,000 apiece.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Mr. Appler. How are you, sir?
Sorry to hear. I'm all right, sir. All right. Report for July 2017. Roads, we continue mowing the roadsides throughout town. We replaced two catch basins and 30-foot to 12-inch PVC on Church Street. We had to sweep some sections of roads due to heavy rains and washout. We repaired a ditch line on Bingham Road. We flailed sections of South Road and we repaired a section of drainage on Reservoir Road. Brushing weeds, we had our excavator with a flail mower, out cutting brush on Mulberry Willow Tree and on Prospect. And we had to cut up a downed tree on Bingham Road and large branches on Mount Rose Road. We cut down 10 dead ash trees on North Road. Ward Department on 777, we repaired road cuts on Albertson and also on Milton Turnpike. Sheriff's Services, we had two trucks for two days hauling Millings for Town of Lloyd. On 711 and 12, we had three trucks hauling asphalt for Town of Aesopis. Fuel use, fuel usage, gas, 344.9 gallons. Diesel, 754.9 gallons.
So we're gonna start, we have to coordinate with Gail on the sidewalks in Marlboro with the local 17?
I made three calls already, so I haven't got a coordinated date back where they could say they could actually do it.
Okay.
I've called three times. I'll call again tomorrow. I'll talk to...
All right.
If I don't get the exact date, I'll call Mr. Diorio Direct. I don't want to try to do that.
So you're figuring around the 1st of September, Gail?
September, yeah. Be a good month, yeah.
Okay.
September, yeah. I thought it was August.
Well, he has, I think he has other things that he's...
Yeah, we gotta...
That's fine.
Get too far into the fall. We have snow.
And you have leaves.
And we have leaves and...
Hurricane.
Everything else.
So we have, how many feet that we're gonna do on...
I forget the measurement on it. Probably around, not quite 400 feet on Grant Street and about 200 on Church Street in Milton.
Church is two, four?
Yeah.
So seven, seven twenty-five, something like that.
About what we did last year, a little bit more than what we did last year.
All right. This year, I think they want to do the curbing also.
Separate curbing?
No, probably more monolithic.
Yeah, Gray Street's a little technically difficult because all the driveways and entrances and everything.
Which side you doing? The west side?
Yeah, the west side, yeah.
That's quite raised up, too.
West side of Grant Street?
Yeah.
Yeah, really bad shape.
From Western Avenue to Deboise, yeah.
Yeah, it's the worst part of the law.
Western Avenue to Deboise, that'd be great.
Yeah.
All right, yep. Thanks, Gail.
All right, now Howard, on your email on the landfill.
Yeah.
I don't know why they pulled out. I don't know what town was paying them for taking their stuff.
Yeah, they were paying us, I believe.
Are paying you.
Yeah.
What happened was the people that take our metal from the transfer station, Messina, I believe, in Gardner?
Yeah.
They don't want to do it anymore. I don't know the exact details either. We weren't, it probably wasn't enough there for them to bother with it. So the suggestion was from Walt that we park our, one of Gail's trucks there on Friday, Saturday and Sunday and then truck it over there on Monday. I think that's what his suggestion was.
Yeah.
I just wanted your opinion on it.
I've got two numbers here for you.
Okay.
We got our Newburg and Profex in Marlboro.
Who?
Profex in Marlboro.
Okay.
They'll probably, I don't, I don't know what they, what Millings was paying you for or whatever.
Would they have a, would they have a...
Yeah, they have, they have...
A dumpster to...
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
So go with them.
All right, great. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'll let you know.
And we're gonna leave that at the landfill, right? The dumpster that they're gonna bring?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't need 1650 looking like a landfill.
We're gonna put it out there in Latentown by the Baptist church.
Good evening, Charlie.
Report for July. Our water consumption total, 14.3 million gallons, which is a daily usage of 460,000 a day. Last month, we had 15.1 millions, which was a daily usage of 502,000 gallons a day. And last year's consumption was the same as this month's also, it's 14.3, which is 460,000 a day. Hydrants, we began, we've been cleaning and painting some hydrants in Milton. Water main repairs, we did repaired road cuts on the previous water main breaks, Albertson Albertson Lane, Main Street, and Milton Turnpike with the help of the Highway Department. Curb boxes repaired, uh, on Western Avenue and White Street. Um, the town park, we repaired our water fountain by the basketball courts. Um, Milton Fire Department, we installed a backflow device. And up at the reservoir, we mowed and cleaned around the reservoir. We also repaired the road, um, by the dam and also the banks by the dam. Um, closings, we had three, markouts twenty. We used gallons of gas use, two hundred, and the mileage for the month was sixteen eighty-five.
Any questions from Charlie?
How's the software doing, Charlie?
Excuse me?
How's the software doing?
Um...
Tina's on vacation, so...
Tina's on vacation and, um, they haven't transferred it yet, so, um, I think they're planning by September.
Okay, to transfer, to transfer the database over to the...
To transfer.
Yeah, they're having some, as you know, with software.
Yeah.
They're having some problems, but they're getting through it.
Okay.
Um, I think they're gonna wait for the next billing, which they should've done previously, so...
Okay.
This way, the information on our payments will be up to date instead of her have to...
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Thanks, Charlie, thank you.
Thanks, Charlie. Colleen, how are you this evening?
Good. Town Clerk, monthly report for July two thousand seventeen, conservation, nine for fifteen dollars and fifty-eight cents, dog licenses thirty-five for a total of a hundred and eighty-five dollars, tow licenses one for a hundred and four fifteen, water services one for fifteen hundred dollars, transfer station permits six for a hundred and eighty dollars, punch cards forty for two thousand seven hundred and ten dollars, marriage licenses three for fifty-two fifty, building department fees one for eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, fire fees one for eighteen hundred dollars, cam fees eighty-four for twelve thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars, accident reports fourteen for a hundred and sixty dollars, certified copies seven for three hundred dollars, Florida requests two for nineteen fifty, park fees three for seven hundred and fifty dollars, for a grand total of twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-three cents.
Questions for the Colleen?
Pretty good. Thank you.
Chief, Jerry, you got anything for the door ward?
I have it.
Oh, okay. So, you're next.
Chief, you wanna read it?
I got it.
You got it?
No, I got the wastewater, I'm next, I'm next.
Yeah, this is the door ward.
Let me do the wastewater, you want to do the door ward?
I'll do it.
I'll do it. Want to do a door ward? Okay, uh, August, Water Quality Management, Inc., August ninth, two thousand seventeen. Report on the Marlboro Wastewater Treatment Plant for two thousand, July two thousand seventeen. The average flow for the plant was ninety-six thousand gallons per day. This is an average, an average dry month at about fifty-five percent of design capacity, a hundred and seventy-five thousand gallons per day. We were having some issues with our flow meter at the plant, these figures may be biased low. We have now resolved these flow meter problems, process is working well, meeting SPD's requirements, SPD's requirements. Lab results show that we remove ninety-nine percent of BOD and ninety-nine percent of suspended solids during the month. Milton Water Treatment Plant. The average filter mill, uh, plant during July two thousand seventeen was twenty-seven thousand gallons per day. This is about forty-nine percent of design capacity, fifty-five thousand gallons per day. We showed ninety-nine percent of BOD and ninety percent of TSS removal. The process is working well, meeting SPD's requirements. Uh, overall, both wa- wastewater treatment plants are in good working order but getting older. We had our annual DEC inspection on July twenty-seventh, the inspector has requested that we install automatic dialer systems to the facilities. We will need to budget for these to be installed in two thousand eighteen. Need any additional information, please do not hesitate to contact me, Tony Falcone, Water Quality Management, Inc. I guess we better get some numbers on what that's gonna be.
Town of Marlboro Door Control, submitted by Andrew McKay, Door Control Officer, monthly report, June first, two thousand sixteen through June thirty, six thirty-one, I don't know, I think he's got that a little wrong, but it says, he's got it right, Sunday, July ninth, two thousand seventeen. So, maybe I'm reading his June report?
Uh, that's the one he sent.
All right, so I'll just read it. Overview, received a total of eighteen calls this month, including six calls to the service from Auburn P.D., State Police and Ulster County Sheriff, who responded to three active complaints, indoor cases which are now closed, resolved. Currently have one open case that has been addressed, but we are ongoing or unresolved. We've impeded zero stray dogs, zero appearance tickets issued this month, we currently have zero dogs in the kennel, we had zero dog bites reported this month. We have three cases in the Marlboro Justice Court at this time. Uh, there is a high volume of calls from residents who dogs have run away, we urge residents to confine their dogs, either a leash or fenced area. We have a healthy coyote population, especially in the Milton area, dogs who don't return home after dark have a chance of meeting one or more of these coyotes. This is a real threat, as we typically have two dogs per year that meet this feat, meet this fate. Again, please confine your pets, end of report. I think I've read that before.
Yeah, I think you did.
So, anyway, the coyotes are still here, just gonna let everybody know, they didn't go anywhere.
The coyotes...
I hear them every night, they're up there.
Yeah. You must have, and I didn't look at the data, just sort of...
That's fine, I just looked before I started reading, but, you know.
Yeah, as soon as you started talking about the coyote.
Yeah, I saw the coyote.
Assessor's report. Our office processed twenty-nine real property transfers. We have one small claims assessment review filed at multiple, uh, searchary files for this year. Uh, the twenty-seventeen assessor's annual report was balanced and filed with the state of New York Office of Tax and Finance. We worked with the school district to complete their omitted and prorated tax reliefs for the upcoming school tax bills. Thanks for the reminder.
So, can I have a question, uh, we got a note today that they're closing Thursday and Friday, the assessor's office?
Yeah, they're, they're waxing the force.
So, they can't set up in the supervisor's, a computer and take people's information and there's...
I did, she didn't mention an alternative, but I'll check with her tomorrow to see what it is, make sure that that's covered.
And how, if they are taking off, how is this getting paid?
Probably taking a vacation.
Are we...
Well, I'm assuming they're taking a vacation.
I won't assume anything. But I, I, I just think if it is, Al, if you can, I mean, they, we could probably set something up in your, in the office up there or whatever, just if someone comes in and has a question. The cabinets would be up in there, right?
I agree, I agree. So, I'll, I'll make sure that happens tomorrow.
So, if you could.
Either if they come down here and, or do something.
All right. Even if it's one of them.
I know that Friday when they did my office, I came in and, but Tina's on vacation, so I left, uh, mid-afternoon, but, uh...
I just think in the end of the week, a lot of people might wanna get stuff from her office going into the weekend, not knowing.
I'll definitely check with her tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay, planning board, uh, for July, there was a meeting on July third that was canceled due to holiday, and meeting on July seventeenth that was held at seven thirty PM at the Town Hall. All members were present, uh, they approved the stenographic minutes from the six-five and six-nineteen, two thousand seventeen meetings. First item on the agenda was Dance Camera House, five West Street, Marlboro Site Plan, public hearing, the applicant and the representatives have reappeared for a public hearing, all input from the public, as well as from Town Supervisor Lanzetta. Planning Board member Steve Clark was favorable for the project. Ulster County planning indicated the project had no county impact. There were ongoing issues regarding the applicant's analysis of floor pin and usage were not consistent with previous analysis of other B and Bs, and I think we heard the outcome of that earlier tonight. Second item on the agenda was Maria Stravrulakis, seventy-three Page Lane, Milton subdivision public hearing, the applicant reappeared for a public hearing to finalize plans to subdivide a twenty-five plus or minus acre lot into two smaller lots. The public hearing was opened and closed, a NEGDEC was issued, and final approval granted by resolution. A one thousand five hundred dollar recreation fee was imposed. Third item was Highland Pet Center, one thirty-one Bailey Gap Road, Marl, Highland? Hmm, okay, Highland or Marlboro? It says Highland, but it would be, if it was Highland, it would be, uh, revised sketch, a men's site plan. Neither the applicant nor their representatives were in attendance, so it doesn't really matter. Uh, then there were three items, three Verizon Wireless, uh, application, one for property of Jason Warden, one for property of James Garofalo, and one for property of absolute automotive. Uh, the first two, the full environmental assessment form was unanimously accepted, and a secret NEGDEC and notice of determination of non-significance and final approval were granted unanimously by resolution. On the third one, the one at property of absolute automotive, due to nothing being received from SHPO, no decision was rendered. The applicant will appear when SHPO determinations are received, I assume that's the state historical Next item on the agenda was Reservoir Road, Marlboro Sketch Lot Line, the applicant's representatives have reappeared with revised plans, which we addressed previous concerns. Highway Superintendent Gail Appeler indicated the removal of two large trees will be required prior to approval in order to provide adequate site distance for the newly proposed driveways. Public hearing was scheduled for August seventh, two thousand seventeen. Next item on the agenda was eighty-six Washington, sixteen thirteen Route nine W, Milton Sketch Site Plan, the applicant's proposal was granted approval from the town board to be included in the business corridor overlay district. The planning board advised the applicant to return with a more detailed proposal, including topography provisions for water and sewer, grading, drainage, erosion, sediment control, a narrative description of proposed use and hours of operation, lighting and landscaping. New York State DOT and Ulster County Planning Board referrals were also required. A public hearing was scheduled for July seventeenth, two thousand seventeen. Next item was Vincent and Moran, Milton Turnpike, Milton Sketch Lot Line, applicant was advised to address the following issues, bulk table number three corrections are required for minimum lot area, right-of-way modifications should be submitted to Ron Blass's office for review, identification of lot numbers and our tax lot should appear. A public hearing was scheduled for August seventh, two thousand seventeen. Next item was Smith Subdivision, First Street in Marlboro Sketch Subdivision, the applicant's representatives reviewed their approval for a five-lot subdivision. Applicant was advised to submit the new proposal to the Ulster County Health Department as previous plans indicated the use of water main lines, whereas new plans included individual wells for each lot, septic systems replacement, placement for lot five appears to encroach upon Central Hudson easement. Clarification with the utility should be obtained, proposal lot five is within the Town of Marlboro Water District. New plans indicate the lot would be serviced by a well. Clarification regarding possible mandatory water main hookup should be received by the Water Department. Conferments from the Town Highway Superintendent should also be received due to the close proximity of three proposed driveways on the cul-de-sac. Grainy drainage and re-erosion and sediment control plans are also required. Town Engineer Pat Heinz also raised the question of proposed long lot geometry concern and advised the board to consider no further subdivision notes on these proposed long lots. Final item was Janet Ridge Crest Drive in Marlboro, discussion without attorney or engineer and stenographer subdivision, neither applicant nor their representative were in attendance. Next deadline is July twenty-first, next scheduled meeting is August seventh, respectfully submitted, Chris Brand.
Thank you, Howard.
Yep.
Appreciate it. Okay, moving on. Report of committees, Recreation Committee, I know they met and we both couldn't make it, do you, did you hear anything? What was, uh...
Just that they wanna add more, they're trying to come up with ways to add different things, more things to be used at Tomback. I did talk a little with Patty about it, and they're working on trying to get more people involved, and they're gonna follow up with us on requests to the board on some things that I think would work.
I got a question, Scott.
Yeah.
I noticed the week they had the farmer's market in front of the Tomback, that everything was more controlled with the parking, looked like it was much more crowded than it ever was up at the park. Has anybody even considered it moving there, is it because they want to be in the park?
I did ask Sheila, and they're looking at it.
They must've did a ton of more business, I saw the place was packed, opened two times I went by there.
Yeah.
I never see it like that.
I haven't heard a response yet.
I don't think Sheila's a, a big fan of it, but, uh...
Excuse me?
I don't think Sheila's a fan of it, is she?
Moving to, uh...
Yeah, she likes the park, so...
She likes the park.
She likes the, the setting and the park.
I think the farmers might like the business. Yeah.
And there were complaints all, all around there, so I don't know, we'll see.
I mean, we had offered here at one point, when we first came here, to do it right here, a little more controlled, too. But the park up, I mean, up there, is parking or paved?
No, I agree. It's up to them, I mean...
Oh, no, I'm not gonna make them do it, I'm just saying.
But I'll, I'll ask again, they, they seem to like the idea, but I think they were, she's told me that it was because of the traffic to the walkway, but you would get traffic either way, right?
Yeah, the walkway's to the north. If you know where the farmer market is, you're gonna go to the farm. Still gotta go north to get the walk. And she's on, and she's on the road, she's rising, going north, they're gonna come back when she's close.
She's not gonna be a fair...
Okay. Uh, Emergency Management Preparedness Committee, Al.
How's it new?
Uh, the Conservation Advisory Committee, uh, we canceled our meeting because on September the fourteenth, uh, there's a program that the county has, so we're offering it to the Planning Board and ZBA, uh...
This is on design.
To attend, so this way they could get credit meeting, uh, I think two credits they get for that, so, uh...
On design guidelines?
Yeah, on design guidelines, exactly.
Okay.
Uh, I think the IT Committee, we're gonna meet tomorrow about the, uh, overhead projector. Uh, Milton Train Station Foundation, uh, the bids are out, uh, there's a pre-bid in, at August sixteenth.
Wednesday.
And, uh, then I think August thirtieth is when we open, uh, yeah, Wednesday, August the thirtieth, twenty seventeen, we'll open the bids.
Okay. Well, let me go, one, I just came to my head, IT Committee stuff is, I got a call from Mike Crasher about the copier down here, and he's saying he's having issues with the copier as far as not being enough capacity, that they're using more than they anticipated when we actually ordered that type of machine.
What do you mean by that, data?
They're saying, they're saying that it's not fast enough, it jams up because they're using it too much, so they, you know, the service guy comes, fixes whatever they do. It's not a problem with the printer per se, is that they're just saying they need a bigger printer. I just reached out to the guy today just to see what could we do, can we change the lease, can we not change the lease? He's saying it's not in our best interest to change the lease because there's a lot of money involved as far as what we have to do. So, anyway, I just wanna let you know, twenty-third, either twenty-third of this month, at nine o'clock, he's gonna come here and go over options, so, next week, I guess. Next Wednesday, yep. Nine AM, yeah. I'll be in Buffalo. So, uh... It's a good time to be in Buffalo. Chris, I, I, and I invited, I told, I told Renee to, if they could come, and if Mike can make it, so that way they're hearing it from them.
Oh, the same people that we have, the big printers?
They do all our printers.
Okay.
So, um, again, let, let him throw us some numbers and let them hear it, and, but he said it'd be wise to wait out the next, because I think we have two more years on the lease. Just like break on the lease and...
Yeah, okay.
But just say hello, all right?
Thank you. Milton Landing Citizens Committee, anything on that?
Uh, people using the park, and then this Saturday, the nineteenth Saturday morning, Robbie Allers is gonna be doing a work detail for the dog park, we've got a bunch of people coming, we're gonna be doing the split rail at the front of the park, you know?
Top seed's gonna be there?
Top seed's gonna be there, volunteers are gonna be there, so, nobody wants to...
Starts at nine or ten?
It starts at nine. Everybody wants to come, bring a pair of work gloves, work, right? So, but we'll be there.
Thank you. Marlboro Hamlet Economic Development Committee, Howard, would you like to talk about that?
Well, we had a meeting, uh, last week, um, and, uh, two main topics we discussed, one is the gateway, uh, on the St. Mary's parking lot in Marlboro, Marlboro Hamlet, and I think Al mentioned that we have a surveyed map and a basically, a, a simple site plan for where the proposed, uh, stone wall could go. Uh, so, thanks Patty Brooks for that and Al's work on that, and that is about a two-hundred and fifty-foot wall with openings to get access to the parking lot and also a walkway access. Of course, it's gonna cost money, so, um, about thirty thousand dollars to build it, that's assuming we get the rocks donated, so, anyway, we have an idea of where it could be, we think it could be in the DOT right away, the DOT is okay with it, um, so, that's a lot of good work, we have a, sort of a plan now, now we can work towards how we get the rocks and how we get the stone wall.
If we go into next year, if we get the two-fifty from Frank, we could use the money we budgeted, walkways through the year.
Possibly.
That possible. You guys have, you guys obviously have a contact with Tilcon, right? You guys just said you were down here?
Tilcon is, that's, we don't have to go on anybody's property, this wall goes on DOT property, okay, so that's a good thing, I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I would, I call your Tilcon, the guy who's your contact, I believe that if you ask them to donate some aggregate to the town that they will because they own property within town?
That's, that's an excellent idea.
They already, they did their, uh, St., well, they did their Tilcon portion in St. Mary's, they donated the item four.
The item four, the aggregate, so if you tell them what you need in the rock, the most probably donate the rock.
Right, but we want it to be Marlboro, Marlboro Field Stone, it has to be certified in Marlboro.
Probably over there.
It's an excellent idea, excellent suggestion. The problem is, they don't ever answer on the phone, you know, they don't ever answer our emails, but...
I bet you they got Marlboro Field Stone down, all that property, down by the river.
Yes, they do, I'm sure they do, anyway.
We take the wall, yeah, right?
Yeah, they, like Howard said, uh, you know, I just called up Howard and said, you wanna take a ride to Nyack because this guy isn't responding to my calls, and it's just happened that he was there, and then he told us the good news that he's no longer gonna be there.
True.
Just like, uh, Mr. Poole, we had that relation with Mr. Poole, and then he disappeared. So, they're doing a New Jersey, New York consolidation, actually, they're doing a consolidation throughout the United States.
Right.
And so, it's top-down management, you know how that is? IBM, you don't know who's in, who's out.
So, that, that was one thing that we discussed in the meeting, this, this gateway, and we're making progress on that, that's good. The second thing we talked about was a meet and greet for the businessmen in the Hamlet of Marlboro, and that's tentatively scheduled for, uh, sometime in September, later September, I'm not sure exactly when the date, yeah.
A meet and greet?
A meet and greet with all the businessmen, just so they can know each other and have an idea that this Marlboro Economic Development Committee exists and the thing, the projects that we're pursuing, and get their feedback and so forth. I think we're gonna do it at the Falcon, maybe?
At the Falcon?
Yeah, right. Those are the two things that were discussed.
Okay, thanks, Howard.
Yep, thank you, Al.
Any questions, Al?
Uh-oh.
This time you got...
That's exactly.
Yes, Mike?
Mike Delvis from the Town of Marlboro. I've heard rock walls come up in discussion before on various sections of Route nine W. Has anyone conducted any type of study as far, as regards to fatalities, motor vehicles striking them, whether they're more prevalent with the rock walls opposed to guardrails? And if we do go with the rock walls, does the town absorb any more liability pertaining to fatalities and injuries?
I just have to jump in and answer that, is, uh, High Park basically has a state highway running through it, and you can't do anything in High Park without putting a stone wall in front of it, so, I mean, the whole corridor there is stone wall, so, I'd say...
Just bring it to your attention, that's all.
I mean, the DOT is aware of what we wanna do, and they didn't bring that up as a, as a concern, so, they did want that, the gateway sign we're planning, Mike, to be a breakaway sign, so if somebody hits it, it falls down, but, they, they seem to be okay with the stone wall, as far as I know.
And that's, that's why I'm bringing the subject to the rock wall, because everything on the side road has to be breakaway, rock wall's pretty heavy duty.
But if you hit a rock wall, it'll break apart, it's not gonna put up a cement wall.
Except, except these.
It would absorb the impact by dispersing the energy, so, I assume that the rock wall will be okay.
But they are certified Marlborough.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mike. Howard, anything on the transfer station?
Transfer station, upgrades to the transfer station, better signage, they painted the rails, they made some shoots for the newspaper, which people like, and then you heard the discussion about the metal, and we'll, we'll get that resolved, but, other than that, no, everything seems to be fine. The work that Gail did for the drainage in the main field out there where it was puddling, that's been resolved, Gail fixed it, so, everybody's happy about that.
Have we reached out to the city to see exactly why? They just said we don't want to do Business Week anymore?
I think the length of time that, it wasn't generating enough business for them.
I don't think it was enough revenue.
For them to.
Wasn't enough revenue for them to actually keep it there.
To keep that dumpster there, you know, those dumpsters are, have some value, and to keep it there for that long.
And scrap is way down.
Scrap is way down, yeah, that's, that's probably the main driving force, yeah.
Okay.
So is dollar, the gold and silver and scrap, it all goes in the same direction, right, so.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Old business, sale of Tomback Building?
Sold.
Yee-haw.
I have a question though, because it's not under contract anymore, I talked to Denny, so, we either gotta get a new Realtor, or we gotta renew, or we gotta say we're not doing it, but, right now, it's technically not under contract.
Scott, do you want to set a meeting up with Denny?
Yeah, I could set one up, and whatever you want to do. I'll, I'll reach out to him again, but I mean, does the board want to stay with, if we're going that direction, do we want to stay with John J. Leese, or do you want to try someone different?
We want to try someone, I mean, where's John J. Leese, where they looking?
He's right on that, in Newburgh there, right at, across from Alexis Diner, is their main base.
Why don't we try maybe somebody up north, maybe try Kingston guy, represents a little more Wausau County?
I would suggest we just, we meet and talk about it.
Let's have a meet and see what he says, I mean, he's a commercial real estate guy, but, we've had a couple people, I think the building department's got a couple people interested, I know Howard has someone interested, but nothing concrete, but, that was one of the main reasons of reaching out to Denny, to, besides, this was, and he said, well, we're not actually under contract anymore.
Yeah, because we do have a commercial, a piece of commercial property down the road that I believe went up for sale, so I just wanted maybe to meet with Danny.
Yeah, I'll, I'll set something.
Go over that and see what the comp would be, or, you know, where, where we are.
Yeah, yep, I'll, I'll reach out to him again tomorrow and see what we could set up.
Maybe we could say Mr. Graciosi's.
I could tell you who Mr. Graciosi's using, John DeMarco.
Well, that could be a conflict.
Yeah, it could be a conflict.
That's who he's using.
But yeah, we went out of contract just in, it just, it just happened, just in July, so, you know, as of August, we're out of contract, so.
Right, so if you could set something up, that'd be cool.
All right.
That's why I wouldn't show it up on the website, I guess.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So, municipal parking in the Hamlet of Marlborough and Milton, we're exactly where we were. If anybody knows any ideas, especially in Marlborough and Milton, there's a lot of ideas, a lot of, some open space where we could do a municipal parking, we have the, the one by the church, most of the time, I think, that's handy for when the firemen have some kind of.
Well, I've been keeping an eye on it, the weekends, people are actually using it now.
Yeah, they are?
Yeah, they actually.
That's good, that's good.
We had one problem in front of the firehouse this weekend, but we took care of that.
And thank Gail for putting that sign that it's 300 feet down the road, and that at Mr. Meneses.
Yeah.
The Milton Sewer Expansion, so.
Where are we? We gotta be there, right?
Thursday, August 24th.
I'm gonna be in Buffalo.
Is, we open the bids at two o'clock.
Man, that took a long, long time.
Yes, it did.
Well, at least we're there.
And the Bayside Project, there's, there's a resolution in front of us tonight, design standards, I talked about that, that we're gonna have that, the planning, Ulster County Planning Board doing that for us. Milton Train Station, talked about the grant, and that's moving along, so, that's, there's a pre-bid opening on August the sixteenth, and then, I think it's August the, like I said, the thirtieth. So that'd be great to get that done, and get that off the list here. LWRP, I think John explained all the grants that we're going after, that were submitted, and if you want to talk a little bit more about the Route 9W corridor study, Howard?
Yeah, I'll just give a brief update, so, two main meetings that I'm aware of since we last had our meeting, one, we met with the DOT over in Poughkeepsie, Alan, myself, Ulster County Planning, who are really running this Route 9W corridor study in terms of project management, and the consultants, met with a couple of people from the DOT, and just discussed some of concerns and so forth. We found out that there's really no plan, we thought there was a plan to resurface it next year, but apparently that's not definite at this point in time. They told us that in terms of addressing items regarding that 9W, safety is key, so if you, if you can prove that there's a safety issue, obviously, that gets more attention. In that regard, what the consultant is planning on doing is a road safety audit sometime in September, and Jerry, that's why I texted you to help with that, on the 26th and 27th, I think, this is actual, they, they go out there for two hours in the morning, and then I think two hours in the afternoon, and do actual visual studies of traffic patterns. They're getting a lot of feedback on the online survey, the monkey survey we do, I think they have over a hundred people have given their opinions on the survey, thanks to putting it out on Facebook, information regarding that, so that's good. Let's see, the other areas they're focusing on, as we mentioned before, is the, the access management up and down 9W, they've sort of identified 21 areas along from Highland down through Marlborough where access management could be improved, curb cuts and so forth, and then they've kind of narrowed that down to six or seven primary areas that they thought we could possibly focus on in terms of doing some short-term work to improve access, so that's to be seen whether we can, what we can do in that regard, because it's gonna cost money and time. So, at these meetings, it's, it's the consultants, it's usually Ulster County Planning, it's usually somebody from our town board, and some town members, Bobby Tronsolito's been very active in these meetings and gives a lot of great information, and Jerry's been to some of them, so, they're moving along, and we're pushing towards like a November timeframe for an actual report and outcome from this, this study, so, that's, that's an update, okay?
Thanks, Al.
Any new business, gentlemen?
Yeah, I heard the time clock's broke, are we fixing it?
Is it falling out of the wall, or?
Well, it's not reading anybody punching in and punching out, that's a problem.
Well, we should fix it.
It should be fixed, yeah.
Make a motion to fix the time clock.
I'll second.
I didn't know you had a time clock.
I'll look into the time clock.
Thank you. I get all these little notes, and then they pop in my head.
Yeah, email me, I'll take care of them before the meeting. Correspondence, all right? Just have one, I guess, from Mr. Appeler, we have employed a, as a temporary employee, Mr. Chris Mankus for a year now, Mr. Mankus has passed and received his Class B commercial license, which is required for a MEO position, I request that I be, be allowed to hire him as a permanent position at $18 an hour, through his six-month probationary period, and upon completion, I will, will raise him to the contract wage of 22.06. He will be filling the vacancy created by retirement of MEO Donald Evans. You got my permission?
Thank you.
Board okay with that?
Yeah, yeah, good. Do you have any, you still have any other openings, or you're full now? Are you, are you full now, or you still have openings?
Do you still have temps working in people's positions, or no?
No, he's full time now.
No, no, I'm saying, do you have other openings, are you full, your crew's full now?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's all I ask.
So, you can use no more people, Gail?
That's it, Gail, right?
You can use two more.
Two more.
Watch that, Howard.
That was Scott, I just.
Pandora's box.
I know that's everybody.
Any public comments on, on any of the agenda?
I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a public comment from here, over the last week or so, I guess you guys decided to put the cattails and have them grow back up to the, up to the walkway almost, correct on the ground, so they're not just.
A certain portion.
Right, no, I know, well, I've gotten some feedback from constituents, and the one thing I've always done since I've been here, I've always voted towards what's good for the majority of the people in this town, rather than what's good for a small group of people that have their own ideas, and I feel that we should keep it just as it is now, let it grow in the water, and I don't think it should come up there, I have, I've had 10 or 12 constituents call me concerned because they walk there, I'm up there two nights a week usually, it's at least doubled or tripled since we've cleaned that area up, people actually using the walkway to work, so, and I like birds, don't get me wrong, but the bottom line is, I like people better, and if there's gonna be more people working up there, walking up there, I would rather see that stay down as it is now, and just grow in the water, that's just what I'm asking for the board to consider, because I wasn't there.
I don't think the cattails came back.
No, they're gonna come back, because he's gonna let them grow, I talked to, I talked to Dave Zambito, he's doing talks.
But they're not there, aren't there now?
No, but you're gonna eat, but that's what the whole idea, the premonition is.
If he stops cutting them, they'll come back.
They will come back.
Right.
Right, and I don't.
In a very restricted area, on the east side of the ramp.
It's still on the east side, but it's on the ground, I don't have any problem with it being in the water.
No, we're talking about in the water, we're not talking about on the ground.
He was telling me, he'd been cutting them on the ground, I think you made it, may have to talk to Dave, because he's gonna cut right back to the, to the water, that's fine.
It was in the water.
It's in the water.
Well, that's not what he told.
No, I, I think, let's monitor, I think it'll be okay, I understand what you're saying, but.
I'm just concerned about, you know, we, we finally got in the park, and it looks really great over there, and everything looks good, people are using the park now, I don't want to see them back off because there's snakes and that stuff, and whatever else that draws to it.
I don't think, you know, like I said, let's just see how it works, we're not, we're not talking about letting it go out to the.
We have the whole long pond, you can put all the cattails you want.
There's no, there's no walkway around the long pond area.
I know, but I thought that was for the birds, they don't walk.
No, this is for people that enjoy birds, let's, you know, I don't, I don't think it's gonna be a problem, let's, let's just monitor it, and if it was, becomes a problem, we can address it.
But we had this discussion last time.
But it's getting late.
We're, we're cutting the grass back to the pond, is that still the same, what we're doing, is that?
Yeah, we're gonna let in the cattails grow in the water, in, in the pond, yeah.
Yeah, but they used to grow, they used to grow up on the grass, before you started cutting.
Well, look, we'll work with Dave, and we'll make it so that it's appealing to everybody, I don't think it's a big issue, I mean, let's, let's just monitor.
I just don't like every time some small group of two or three people comes in.
It's not a small, it's, you know, it's, it's not a small group.
How many people was it?
I don't know.
Couple.
How many people have spoken to me, personally?
Yeah.
Three or four?
Okay.
Okay?
Every time three or four people spoke to you about something.
I personally, I personally feel we should let it.
It's about compromise, so, if we just live in a little area, let's see how it works out.
You're going, you're going from, you're going.
It's in the water.
Eddie, the, the problem is, we had this agreement and discussion last year, we had an agreement with Dave, we were gonna let a portion of the cattails grow back in the round pond, that didn't happen. We had an agreement last year, this is the area we're gonna restrict.
Totally understand, and I think Dave is.
So, so, and Dave was okay with it, everybody was okay with it?
No, I think if Dave is a landscaper, it's better for him not to cut the cattails in the water, he doesn't bother him with it.
Yeah.
He just thinks his, the area looks much nicer without them sitting there, that's all. And I do, I, I believe, I do too.
Let's see what happens.
You know, let's, let's monitor, I don't, I don't think we should get too excited about it.
I just don't, you know.
Hi, you?
I, I just, no, I just try to go with what's better for the majority of the people in the town.
Appreciate it.
Not just small, small groups.
Not the snakes and the birds and the bees?
I love snakes and birds, just keep away from me.
Move along here, let's talk about the resolutions we have for tonight. Can you help me out here, Mike, on the bird situation?
You're good.
Okay, Resolution 85 to appoint a part-time traffic officer, Supervisor Lanzetta proposes the following, whereas the Public Committee, Police Committee has interviewed for the position of part-time traffic officer, and whereas, it is the recommendation of the Police Committee, as well as the Chief of Police, to appoint Paul DeAngelis as part-time traffic officer. Now therefore be it resolved that Paul DeAngelis be appointed effective immediately contingent on a background check, be it further resolved that the rate of pay will be $14.73 per hour, and moves for adoption.
Councilman Corcoran?
Yes.
Councilman Malinelli?
I just want to say one thing, Chief, I think Mr. Baker and I actually agreed on this point, with a part-time person to try to fill those other hours, it looks like it's gonna be, what are we gonna fill them with until we get some, he, he's going to school, he told me, he's gonna be able to.
Right, it looks like he's gonna do Monday, Wednesday, Friday.
Right.
Without any other applicants, I did interview one lady, and I don't think it's gonna work out, but without any other applicants, we're gonna have to cover it with the SRO problem.
Okay, I just don't, I want to know if you have.
How about the?
I do have Ralph still, so.
Yeah, Ralph.
You might fill him a little bit first.
Right, he doesn't want to do too much, he's at the.
He hasn't wanted to do too much, no.
He doesn't want, right, so, but I'll tell him we're in a bad way right now, and I'm sure he might help out in at least for the first month, and I'm hoping I can find another business.
Now, is, is the, the gentleman that's there now, is he, who's training him?
Matthew Harp is gonna train.
Paul.
Paul, before Matt Leese, he put in a reservation, I did ask him to hold off until we can hire someone so we can get a train.
Because I just want to tell you, I have not, I have, had nothing but compliments, the way the traffic's been flowing since he's been there, they're not backed up all the way past the funeral home and stuff, they're going one way and the other way, so, I don't want to lose that momentum as far as keeping the traffic going.
I hope all they're just, they're the job.
We get basing on the traffic. Okay, I was just asking if you had a plan, that's.
He's really good, actually.
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, and I say yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Koenig?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Supervisor Lanzetta?
Yes. So, Resolution 86 to introduce the SECRE finding statement for consideration and adoption by resolution by the Town Board as lead agency for the Bayside mixed-use development, and so this is on the web, it's about 42 pages, and it has everything to do about the findings from the FEIS, and it's a secret classification, it's a Type 1, and so, with this resolution here, passed by this board, then Bayside would pass everything that the Town Board, on the Town Board side, has to do, and it would go to the Planning Board. So, with that said, need a motion to pass this?
Yeah, Al, I would just, I don't know, there is one typo or whatever, it's kind of an important one, in the second paragraph, under introduction.
Page one?
Yeah, the I introduction, under A, description of proposed action, second paragraph, the second sentence, it says, based on recent modification to the town zoning code, the need for a rezone is, and the word no should be in there, it says no longer required, if I'm, if I'm reading this correctly, right? So, I think that's important, that that go in there.
Why we amend that?
Yeah, that's a good catch, Howard.
It's about as far as I read, I fell asleep after that.
Which, where, you're saying, the second.
Says where?
Paragraph?
Description of proposed action, A, second paragraph, second sentence that begins with based, on recent, you with me?
Hold, hold.
Based on.
Hold on, Howard, Howard, I see what you're saying, but Tom, now, this is zoned all right, even with the H, with the floating zone, there's still technically is a rezone, isn't there?
No, because.
And even though, I mean, even though we have the floating zone, and I know that's what we establish a zone for, is technically we don't, there is no need for a rezone, it just automatically, I just want to make sure.
This was another zone change we changed.
We did that.
This is multiple, this is multiple dwelling.
I guess.
It had to do with most dwellers.
It had to do with age, 55 and above.
So you're gonna put the, you're gonna make a change with.
Just say no.
It is no longer required.
Yeah, no zoning, because we already did that.
Did that, yep.
Is that right, Tom?
Yeah.
So we have to make a motion to amend it then?
I'll make, I'll make that motion to amend that later, as, as just discussed.
Who seconded it?
I'll say.
To change it to no? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.